Second, is there, are there any comments or questions, conversation? No, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve the bill's payable, could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Terrific. With that, we're gonna move into the superintendent's report.
Yes, the first one is exterior lighting rebates. And when we were doing the project with Wold, one of the things they talked about is that you're gonna be able to get some rebates, but they can never guarantee like how much it would be or whatever that might be. And I know that as board members, you see change orders, which is usually a negative for us. But our exterior lighting rebates, not only for the parking lots, but we also did some of the exterior lighting on our buildings, is around twenty-six thousand five hundred. So seeing that we're on Hastings Communicable Television, I thought it'd be good to share that with you as a board and ensure that not only are those lights, of course, improved, but they're also not using as much wattage, et cetera, so good all around. And I was surprised about the twenty-six thousand dollars. I was just guessing five to ten when we started the project of what it would be, so that's good news. Appropriate expenditure training, the only thing that I wanna share with you as a board, and I know that you as a board will agree with me on this. As we've been going through our appropriate expenditure training district wide, of course, it's gonna be that we as a district can't be doing some of the things that we've been doing, or maybe what other districts are doing. And I just wanna say publicly, and I know you as board members get it, this is coming from you as a board, and it's coming from the state of Minnesota under statute. And I know that sometimes our own staff believe that the district office is trying to put these mandates in place, and we wouldn't be doing if it wasn't a statute or something that you as a board know that we have to do, because it is gonna mean some of the things that we do do for students, we're gonna have to step back on. So anyway, I just wanted to share that publicly, and I know that board members get it and you understand it. So we're just continuing, moving forward with that training. And I know that Jen's here tonight, we continue to get questions, and that's good, that's what we want, keep getting the questions. And if we don't know, we call our attorney, so our attorney can let us know on that. Policy committee, we've even had some changes as the policy committee since we met. Just to give you an example, as a board, they revised a policy after they had already revised it, and so now we're gonna have to meet again on that one. Mike Johnson and I, we were gonna meet today, but they also, he downloaded a different nine oh three on PSEO students than me, so now we had to get the same policy from MSBA, so Mike and I are gonna meet next Tuesday as well on that one. But the first reading, the background checks for the board members who don't sit on the policy committee. There were a couple of changes that our committee made to the background checks. One was the MSBA policy and our current practice was that if a first-year teacher, fresh out of college, came to us, we never gave them a background check because that was something that they had in their senior year of their program. And we as a committee felt that we should still be background checking them because they maybe graduated from their program in late April or May, and maybe they were involved in something since then. So our committee said that we wanna change that, and we wanna do background checks on those individuals too as they come in. There was some wording in the policy about students, and we wanted to make sure that if a college student comes here and they're out of the sight of a teacher or volunteer, that they too need to have a background check. We recognize that a high school student who might be a peer helper for another student, we're not gonna do background checks on them. So those were a couple of them. And then MSBA policy said that in very, very approved. Our committee felt that if the policy was just read as approval, so we added a sentence that said, "In very rare situations, the superintendent can approve work without a background check." And I gave an example to our committee of something that happened this year. And I'd say in all my sixteen to seventeen years of being here, it's maybe only happened four or five times where I've had to approve it without the background check being in hand. And this year it happened, where all of a sudden, late in August, we decided to hire two kindergarten teachers. And the elementary principals call me and say, "Tim, they haven't had a chance, they've come to the office, they submitted the background check, but we would really like them to start with our teachers in that first week of August, welcome back." So then I gave approval that yes, they could be in their classrooms, getting their classroom ready, meeting other teachers, that they weren't working directly with students, that I would allow them to start in that situation. And so our committee felt that that was good, it was very rare, but it had to be the superintendent. The travel-related expenses, actually, our committee didn't even look at that one, but the only change to the travel-related expenses was, it was really for our own staff. So let's say Mike Johnson's gonna go with four teachers to an Avid training in downtown Minneapolis. And he says, "I'm going to get the school van, let's load up at seven o'clock and let's all go there." If a teacher says, "I'd prefer to drive myself to it," that's okay, but then we're not going to be paying that teacher mileage. So we changed that policy to say that in situations where a school van is going, and we understand that you might wanna
Where transportation is available.
Available. Then you won't, and again, this happens very rarely, but we wanted to make sure that we covered our bases on that one. The staff recognition, we've already approved that policy, we had approved it under four twenty-one, but there is already another MSBA policy, four twenty-one, so we're just renaming it four thirty. So I think this has been on the agenda, we've approved it a couple of times under four twenty-one. So we've changed nothing on that policy, it's one that you already approved in the last month, but then we found out that there was another four twenty-one, so we just changed it to four thirty. The school board acceptance of gifts, it's pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward. It says that the school board can accept a gift, and that individuals at the time of the gift can give that gift to the school, let's say it's a piano for the music program. But once it is accept, once, I'm just letting everybody know that once the school does accept it as a gift, it is our property. So if Dave says, "Well, I'm going to give a piano to the high school show choir," he can't then come back two years later and say, "I don't like the direction that the program is going, I'm gonna take my gift back." So basically, it's a policy saying that the board does have the right to accept gifts, you don't have to, because maybe a gift might come with some expenses to it. Somebody next door at a Pinecrest might say, "Well, here, we're gonna gift you our house." And you might say, "Well, that's fine, we don't really want that," you know. So the board still has the right of whether or not to accept the gift, but then once it becomes accepted, it's the property of the school district to decide which way to go forward with it. So those were the four policies that our committee reviewed. I'm probably going to connect, tomorrow, I'll send out an email to the policy committee again, see if we can meet next Thursday or Friday, somewhere in there, after Mike Johnson and I get a chance to look at the two policies that we've been looking at, one is PSEO students and visitors being on school property, and the other is credits for learning. And then a few other policies that we're looking at right now too. So policy committee members, I'll shoot you that email and see if there's a time and date that works for you next week. Mike and I are meeting on Tuesday, so I'd probably wait till Thursday or so. So that was it for the first readings.
Lisa?
So, yeah.
Can I just, since Tim has before here, can I go off subject here and just say, how did school go? School started now, is there, how'd the first couple of weeks go?
I think a really good start, transportation is usually one of the big wrinkles. Definitely having good weather to start really helps, it's not raining on one of those first two days. Then now because of the rain, Terry Johnson will look at loads on buses, 'cause more students will ride rather than walk or bike. But no, overall, we've had a really good start to the year. And I don't usually look at the student counts until about October or November, because we still have a lot of transition between now and then. And then I come back to you at that time and say our predictions were this. Our initial predictions overall, it's, Jen had adjusted it for our levy. Right now, if we go off of the numbers that we have right now, we're within two students predicting where we'd be, which is crazy, crazy close. Now, I can change a lot between now and November as families tend to settle in for the winter, but that's when I bring back, as you know, very important information, 'cause the student counts tie into our revenue. Our auditors were here for, I wanna say, five or six days about last week, and they've met with Jen and went through some of the preliminary numbers on how we finished our last year budget. And we did get some good news there, and I'll be sharing that with you as board members in an email here. And then I'll let the auditors share that when they come, so good start to the year.
Good, thank you.
Can I ask a more specific question about that? So we had hired the two new kindergarten teachers, which I think was a great idea. Did those numbers come in about where we expected?
Yes, they did.
Because that was, we had such
Yes.
push of late enrollment, it was a question of whether
Yeah, you're
real enrollment.
You're making that decision in late August then, and predicting, well, will four or five more come in, what will the class sizes be? And definitely, I think, as I shared with you as board members, it is a guessing game. We have lived with twenty-four in kindergarten in past years, but with our budget being in a good spot and very stable, we don't have to live with twenty-four. And good point, those numbers did come in right where we thought they'd be.
Okay.
So they're, JFK and Pinecrest now are right around eighteen to nineteen, where they would've been twenty-four to twenty-five, which did mean at JFK Elementary then, you know, we were gonna, we were debating between art on a cart, music on a cart, et cetera, and we have moved art out to the former curriculum center, if you're familiar with JFK, the outside building.
The old golf course.
The old golf course clubhouse, yes. So, and you know, that's always a question of, do you move kindergarten out there? Do you move a specialist? Because if you move a specialist, you're now, four hundred some students are transitioning during the week, where if you move a classroom, then those twenty-some students have to move. And so, but it is a very nice, if you've ever been in there, it's a very nice wide open space, which is really conducive to the art classroom as well, so. So good, yeah, good question and good follow-up, Lisa.
Alright, I am gonna loop back though, I did have one quick question on policy, but Joe took us in a good direction. So the, so you talked about four policies with some number coming.
Yep.
Two, three, four. Is this the first reading, just talking about the fact that they're coming?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, this is the
No.
This is the first reading of these four.
Just the four, okay.
So I'm sharing here the changes
Yeah, the modifications from the existing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if, if at a meeting like this, if you as a group would say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we don't like that, that, you're background checking everybody, that's an extra cost to a first-year teacher, blah, blah, blah," then our, then our policy committee would
Okay.
check it again. But otherwise, if I hear nothing from you either tonight or within the next day or two, then Deanna puts in the changes.
And then it comes into the second reading formally, where that, where an action is taken?
Yep.
And then there'll be another chunk that get annotated for first reading, okay.
And MSBA just sent us out this week some more revised policies, so.
Alright.
And you never know if that revised policy is two words, three words, or two paragraphs.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. Alright. With that, we'll move into our action items for night, tonight. The first of which is a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven thirteen, student activity accounting. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
As we talked about last time on this one, our policy committee did not review this, this was a first-time policy from MSBA, and of course, this ties back to the statute.
Right.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Our second action item for the night is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreements for three groups, the Hastings Principals Association, Education Minnesota Hastings Teachers, and Licensed Community Education Contractor, Contract. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I'll just give you some background on all three. I'll start on the bottom and work my way up. The Licensed Community Education Coordinator Contract is one individual that's in that group right now. And typically, the district has always followed whatever the teachers get, that that contract would get. There are other community ed coordinators at the community center, but they are not based off of a licensed coordinator contract. So again, for years, our tradition has been, whenever we settled the teacher's contract, we settled it at exactly the same percentage for this contract as well. Education Minnesota Hastings Teachers Contract, they have ratified that, so what that means is it's been presented to them. Their union membership has voted in approval. So therefore, if the school board does approve it tonight, the contract is settled for another two years, the current year that we're in, and then the following year. We did start earlier this year in negotiations, I don't think that that means that that's why we're getting a settlement any earlier, but we did after our last negotiation session, just start an earlier date, we started around March of this year. Lisa was on that committee, Peter was on that committee, and Scott was on that committee. The meat and potatoes is always the money, so I'll start out with that. We did settle at two percent new money and one point nine five percent new money. And what that means then is that teachers also, if they're moving, they get a step, so that's a certain percentage too. So if I've been here five years, I'm going to move to step six, that would be a percentage increase in my salary to begin with, and then new money to that cell is two percent, and then the next year is one point nine five. You know, I think that when we use, as a board, I agree with your philosophy on negotiations, and that is, don't just look at the percentage of what we settled at, or what other people set out, settle at, or what the state gives us, or how much money we have in the bank, or we don't have in the bank. I think as a, as a board, you continue to stick with what is the total package that employee groups are getting. What is our health insurance compared to other? And I'm saying this not only about the teachers, I'm saying about principals, custodians, cooks, PSAs. You're always looking at what is the total package that we give. And I, and I think that the two percent and one point nine five was a fair settlement. When we had done our budget projections back in December, we just throw in, this is what would happen off of a percentage. And I never come to that meeting, and Jen or Kim Frye never come to that meeting and say, "Well, that's all we're giving," or "We should stay under that." We do those projections to give you as a board a feel for what the budget will look like. And already, you know, since our projection in December is, when you're dealing with a sixty, you know, million dollar budget, it's always, it's always in flux. You know, everything's off of a prediction. So again, I don't go out, and I don't believe the school board should go out and start watching now, "Well, what did New Prague settle at, or what did Otana settle at, or what did Cambridge Isanti settle at, or Farmington?" Those are schools of our size, because that percentage tells you one story, but there's health insurance, there's dental insurance, there's 403B, there's retiree health. So again, I think as a board, you've done a very good job of looking at the total package. Schedule C is also part of the contract, and so Schedule C can be coaches, it can be National Honor Society, it can be chess club, et cetera. And this was the first time in about eight or ten years that we did a, over the summer, I met with teachers and some principals, and we looked at Schedule C, and we felt that overall, our Schedule C was very comparable to schools our size, so we decided not to change it. And we decided to give them a percentage as well at two percent and one point nine five percent. You've already acted on another big item in the contract negotiations, and that was that we would give another day of
Workshop.
Workshop. And so we decided to take two of our existing days that were early outs, and so that was part of the negotiations. Another part of the negotiations was to have a district-wide meeting four times a year on discipline, behavior plans, how's that happening at all of our sites? And we have our, and the board agreed in a memorandum of understanding to do that four times out of the year, and our first meeting is, I think, October ninth. And again, I haven't decided, or I haven't, not that I've decided, but I haven't asked who would, a board member or two to sit on that committee along with five principals and six or seven teachers. It was, as we just listened to, how do you start, what are the behavior plans, how's it working, et cetera. So those were the core in the teacher negotiations. I don't know, Peter or Lisa, if you have anything else to say about the core of that negotiations?
No, I don't, and those are the three things that I've summarized for people that have asked.
No, it was, they were, they were good negotiations, good discussions on both sides, I thought. So everybody, I think, came in with a good attitude and worked well together.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, yeah, and I agree, and I, I shared with the teachers, 'cause I, you know, with, with me retiring, I knew it was gonna be my last negotiation, I shared with them what I liked about them, is they're always able to tell it like it is. They don't not say something to our face, and board members don't not say it right. It's very respectful, but yet it's very pointed. And we realize that they're trying to negotiate for what's best for their members, we're trying to negotiate what's best for the school. And again, I'm very happy to get the settlement, and I do think that it's a fair settlement. The Principals Association, this is a really late sett, the latest settlement that I've ever had with their group, or that we've had with their group. And again, part of it is, we've always settled really late with the principals, because the principals are just really, I'll just say, relax about it, they're like, "Tim, that's fine, we'll get to it during the summer," or, you know, whatever it might be. And so we don't always get to it right away, and then we get end vacations, et cetera. So that's part of it, too, on why we've always settled later. Typically, what we've done with the principals administrators, we've always followed what the teacher settlement was the time before, and we try to mesh it within that amount. So for example, we know that principals make more than teachers, so if a teacher gets a two-and-a-half percent raise, that doesn't always mean that the principals are gonna get a two-and-a-half percent raise. So what had happened the last go-around with teachers was we had settled for a dollar amount in one year and a percentage in the next year. I've told boards that they should always try to settle in a dollar amount about once every four years, because then the gap doesn't widen from top to bottom. And so the boards over the years have done that. And the previous settlement with the teachers was a dollar amount in year one and a percentage in, in year two. And again, mathematically, if you have a forty thousand dollar teacher and a seventy-five thousand dollar teacher, if you keep giving each of them two percent each year, you're gonna spread the top away from the bottom. And so the principals knew that going in, that we were going to do that, so it's, it's seven dollars a day in year one that they get as an increase. If you were to translate that to a percentage, it's, it's kind, I'd say the average would be about one point one percent. Of course, we have some principals making twenty to thirty thousand more than other principals, so that's not gonna apply to all. But the seven dollars a day applied to all. So it didn't matter if you're Mike Johnson, the high school principal, or Chris Hughesby, the assistant principal, they both in that year get seven dollars a day. The second part of the agreement was that in year two, it would be then a one point seven five percent increase. A few of them are still moving steps, they don't have as many steps, I think they have five to six steps, so a few of them are still moving steps. So for most of them, it is a one point seven five percent increase. And then the last one, in their contract with the retiree health, the teachers, a few years ago, we went to a lump sum settlement when they retire, and we pay it upfront based off of triple gold. The principal's current language had said that eight years or until sixty-five, whichever is shortest, we'll just pay for your, your single premium. They asked us if we would go to the lump sum like the teachers. Now, you gotta realize, when you're dealing with smaller groups of eight or ten, these decisions, even within their group, are easier to make, because they have a couple people close to retirement and some that won't retire for another ten years. It's difficult to make those big changes in retiree health with three, a three-hundred-member teachers union. And so we talked about it, and I penciled it out mathematically. And again, the variables are the lump sum. I'll just pretend Dave's a principal, and we give him the lump sum, and then if he would happen to pass away, his family gets the health insurance. So in that situation, the school district could lose money in that situation, because we wouldn't have had to pay it then to him for the next eight years. You're also betting, what is health insurance going to increase over the next eight years? So there's just a lot of variables, but when I penciled it out, I felt it was pretty close to cost neutral for the school district, and if that's what their group then wanted to do, so be it. Because it was pretty cost neutral overall, because I'm going off of what our health insurance committee has typically said, is that health insurance will increase about six to seven percent a year. So they too have ratified the contract, so again, if the board approves that tonight, and then you'll be negotiating with them again within like four months.
We thought March was an early start last time.
Yeah. But again, like I said, part of it was just some strange things happened, and we just didn't get together, and, and both sides were fine with that. We'll get together later on. So any other questions on both of those? Okay?
Okay. Here, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Our third action item for tonight is a motion to approve five change orders related to a couple of the different bond-funded projects, both at the high school and the middle school. Couple are deducts, three are adds. Adds are bigger. I, okay, could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
To approve the change order, second? Good, I was afraid that was gonna die for lack of a second. You guys are scary. Thank you, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm not gonna go into the smaller deducts or the, or the smaller add, I'll go into the bigger adds at the middle school. And I can't remember if the last work session, we had talked about these at all, but the first one of the six, well, they're all the middle school, so I guess I'll just keep, the first one, a couple of the major ones, in the, in one of the coaches' room. According to the plans, they put the window in, and when the teachers and coaches came in, they felt it should be lowered. And so they recommended that it be lowered, and that cost about fifty-two hundred dollars to come in and then lower the window. 'Cause I'm sure you're taking out block and re-putting in the window and repainting and all that fun stuff. Some of the tile in one of the areas, it wouldn't stick, because the paint in that area was different, so they had to come in and grind off the paint, so that their adhesive would stick. I know that, Joel, you do some of that for a living, and I don't, tile work.
Getting good notes, how to make more money.
Yeah. So grinding out the paint was about four grand. The air handling units, there had to be revised access, where they, they couldn't go in where they thought they could go in, and so they had to revise the access for the air handling units, that was about twelve thousand. And then there was some wiring disconnects for all the air handling units, and that was a big one, that was about thirty thousand dollars for the wiring disconnects. Some other ones then down in the ninety thousand dollar. The code had changed in the showers in the middle school, you now had to put a membrane in. You just couldn't rocket, there had to be some type of rubber membrane that was extended beyond what they had said, so that was $15,000. They had to paint above the trusses. I mean, we walked down there, you know how it's that open mechanical look? So they...
For the ceiling.
For the ceiling. So not only was it that they had to paint the walls, but now they were asked to paint above in the trusses, and that wasn't in the original bid, so that was around $13,000. They had to demo a cooling unit and demo some copper tube and relocate them on-site, and one of them was $12,000, and one of those was $25,000. And all of these also go before Joe Haas, they also go before Jim Huberity, and then Wold looks at them to say, "Is that what that should have cost to do that?" And so you have two different sets of eyes locally, and then you have Wold telling us that, yes, that is a fair market price for what they had to do, because sometimes we get into an argument over whether that's a fair market price, so... And then this means, again, probably within about three weeks, I'll ask Wold to come meet with our facility committee again and update us where we are at the middle school, because we know the middle school is tight with contingency. And so I'll ask them to meet with our facility committee, give us some updates. I know there's a few other change orders coming, and we'll talk about that. I've also asked them to, again, meet with Kerry Gore on Tilden with the roofing project and the windows, so that'll be coming too.
So these are, I mean, a couple of them are, you know, they're big numbers, $60,000, $90,000, which nobody wants to put an add change order in. Although, if the work is done, they should be fairly compensated. I do think it's important to keep in mind that the scope of that particular contract, that middle school project, was $20,970,000. Okay? So while these are not insignificant amounts of money, we are at about 1% in change orders on that project, which is a pretty tight number. I mean, we're not done, obviously, but it's not, it does not feel out of scale to me, I guess is what I'm saying. It does not feel out of scale to me, that we would have had these experiences today.
Agreed.
Is there any further discussion on these change orders? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Our fourth action item for tonight is a motion to approve a resolution appointing election judges for the November 5th, 2019 School District General Election. I would like to entertain a motion and I would ask whoever makes the motion to consider waiving the reading of this particular resolution, second?
Second.
Waive the reading.
Thank you. Waive the reading? All right, is there any discussion?
I mean, thank you for everyone who is stepping up to be an election judge. That's, I mean, it's important to have them.
Yeah. All right, Russ, this is a roll call vote.
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Bustinback?
Yes.
Scott Gergen? Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Dave Pimble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Terrific. Our fifth action item for tonight is a motion to approve the proposed maximum levy limitations and certification of the 2019 payable 2020 levy. For people that are listening tonight, the budget and levy will be discussed at the December 11th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting. And at that meeting, the public is welcome and allowed to speak, and at that time, the final levy will be adopted at the December 11th, 2019 Board Meeting. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
So this motion is to set up the December...
The motion is to say, given where we stand right now, we would approve the maximum, requesting the maximum levy. And the, just to take the point of time to say, there will be a public discussion opportunity in December to decide if, in fact, this maximum amount is the amount that we would take action on and approve. So this is just setting that up a limit at this point.
And again, it's not that, that's where we're different from the county and the city. We can't say, "Well, we're going to raise it 4.9% or 6%." This really ties back to our operating levy that the public approved, our bond that the public approved, how many students that we have, et cetera. It'd be very difficult for me to think of a situation where you'd say, "We don't want those dollars from our public," or "We don't want those dollars from the state for the student." I mean, so, it's pretty much been said.
Further discussion? All right, Russ, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Bustinback?
Yes.
Scott Gergen? Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Dave Pimble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Thank you. Our sixth action item for tonight is a motion to approve the revised classification and corresponding position description for the Director of Buildings and Maintenance, grade 15. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
We've already posted for this position to tie a name to it. You know, Jim Huberity resigned at our last board meeting, so it's his position. And again, by restructuring, it's crazy to restructure some of the duties out. It actually raises it up a grade, because then he spends less, the position will spend less time at sites and do more supervision than managing at that site, so... And we sent, we send this out, Tim Collins doesn't determine this, Jen doesn't determine this, we send it out to a pay equity firm, and they do an analysis through the job description, and they tell us what grade it should be.
The new person won't be out shoveling them.
Well, they might. It smells a lot.
If it gets bad enough.
Are you getting some people interested, or?
I'd say we're at about maybe eight applicants right now, I'm not sure. I haven't looked lately, but I'd guess roughly that.
When does it close?
I think September 28th or 30th, right in there. And then we'll look to interview, well, as I look at the applicants, if I feel there's a good pool, we'll look to interview probably October 7th or 8th, right in there. I just want to say, too, that I've shared with board members in work sessions, you know, Jim Huberity's probably saved us a million dollars in labor, if you think about it, over the last 12 years, because he was the lead at the high school. He left that, we never replaced it. When our lead at the middle school left, we never replaced it, so we've been without those two positions for 12 to 13 years, and those are bought up with FICA and PVRA and everything, that's in health insurance, that's about 70 to 80 grand each. So he's done a tremendous load, and I told you, his board members were going to have to hire this position and then hire another position to fill some of that. So I know that that's going to be coming after we fill this position.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Our seventh action item for tonight is a motion to approve the participation of a following part-time teacher who are employed at less than .8 FTE in the TRA Part-Time Mobility Program. We have a single teacher at the high school that would be eligible to participate. Should we approve this motion? Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I'll say is I still don't understand this law. We have an individual who this costs us nothing, and they have to be willing to pay in more out of their pocket to TRA, and you as a board have to say, "Okay, we'll let you." But it's what we've done for the year, over the years, so again, it does not cost the district anything, but it allows the individual to pay in above and beyond the part-time to their retirement plan, which we gladly will let them do.
Which is valuable, yeah, absolutely, valuable to them. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Our eighth action item for tonight is a motion to approve an increase in FTE for Gail Glover from 0.665 to 0.8 effective July 1st, 2019. Could I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Again, just a recommendation from Dave Hayman, as he again starts at lower FTE and adjusts up, so I'm following that recommendation. I'm probably going to move our next work session to Tilden, just to give you as board members a feel, again, we're continuing to experience an increase in identification of early childhood special ed students, and we're also getting an increase in ECFE in preschool, which is a good thing to have, so, but it is putting a little bit of a pinch on space at Tilden, and I want to walk that through with you a little bit, so we'll have our work session at Tilden in October.
All right, terrific. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Our ninth action item for tonight is a motion to improve the employment of the following. It's a list of, I'm going to guess, 12-ish people. It is available on the district's website in our agenda, if anybody watching wants to see the entirety of the list. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Our 10th action item for tonight is a motion to accept the resignation of two individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion. Peter has something he really wants to say, too. He's feeling really stymied.
Other than I.
I'm sorry, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? And then our 11th action item for tonight is a motion to approve for five leaves. Here again, those are listed on the meeting agenda, which is available on the district website. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. And then our 12th action item for tonight is a motion to approve the retirement of Patricia Abarchik, after 30 years of service as a teacher at the Hastings Middle School, effective January 23rd, 2020. Could I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to share, for those of you who don't know her, her work ethic has been just unbelievable. I asked her to become Director of Teaching and Learning. She rolled up her sleeves, filled that position for probably six to eight years. Then we decided the best for the program and the district for her to go back in the classroom. She helped the transition, so I just want to say that, for those of you who don't know her, she has done a lot for us in different positions, so thank you to her.
Yeah, I'll also say that any time I've ever talked to her, she's got a smile on her face, and she's got a story to tell about a student, every single time. She's just got that passion for students, and that, and you can just tell how much it energizes her, and it's just great to have that vibe in our district, and we wish her well. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Okay, so our next item is other business. We have three upcoming meetings. The first of which is October 2nd at the middle school auditorium, and that's a school board candidate forum, I believe is being hosted by Dakota County League of Women Voters in coordination with a, or supported by AAW, in terms of providing some people. And then we have our work session, which on the agenda is annotated as at the district office, but it sounds probable.
I just changed it. Yeah, I will.
There's been a shift in the agenda. That'll be at Tilden. And then, anybody that wants to come beforehand and play pickleball, I'll be there. And then our next regular meeting, regular district, school board meeting, will be here on the 23rd of October.
And also on October 9th, that is our, you know, and it would be nice if one of the board members who was on the teacher negotiations, because that's where this came out, that's going to be our first meeting with teachers and principals on behavior, but I'll send out an email, seeing if Scott, Lisa, or Peter, if you first, if one of you could make that, and if I can't get, you know, one or two of you, then I'll go to the other board members to see what their agenda is like at 4 o'clock. But I know that because the three of you had all the background discussion, if you can, you can, if not, I'll have another board member sit in. And I just want to share, too, that the policy committee, when we meet next week, I'm just going to give you a few examples of some drop-off and pickup for transportation that I'm looking at district-wide, and you can just give me your gut feel back on some of those as well.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. With that, could I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
Second.
No hesitation on that one. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.